Please come on and sit down, we're gonna get going. Joining us in the piano tonight for the Star Spangled banners is Mr. Charles Gallagher. If you all please rise. Thank you very much, Mr. Gallagher. Do we have any town meeting members who have yet to be sworn in? Anyone who's just showing up? Okay, I don't see any. Ms. Rowe?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, it is moved if all the business of the meeting is set forth, and the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session when the meeting adjourns, and adjourns to Monday, May 16, 2011, at 8:00 PM.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, so moved. One of our town meeting members brought his daughter to see around, she was wondering where daddy goes every Monday and Wednesday, so I'm gonna say hi to her, 'cause she was about five. Hi, Megan. I told her I would. Any other announcements or resolutions? Any announcements or resolutions? Good, none? Any reports of committees to be submitted this evening? None? Oh, we're moving right along, so we don't need Article 23. That brings us back to Article 21. Mr. Tosti was next on the list.
Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members, I would like to move to amend the proposed vote under Article 21 by replacing in the last line the word "last" before Friday with[280.77][280.77]"third." Shall not be open, or shall open not later than the first week of December, nor shall it be closed earlier than the third Friday of following January.
That's been seconded. You have it in writing, or you gave it to me?
Can I give it to you?
Okay. That's within the minor change.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I think the Board of Selectmen have usually handled this reasonably well over the years, I'm not quite sure why we need this article, but if we do have this article, I'd really urge that you not keep the warrant open until the last Friday of January. In the first week in December, I don't really care, but it's sort of irrelevant because, like, ninety percent, and I think the Selectmen's office can reinforce this, probably ninety percent of all the articles that come into the warrant come in on the last day or two. So it doesn't matter how early you open it, they're all gonna come in in the last couple of days. Once the warrants all come into the Board of Selectmen, they all get reviewed by the Town Council, Board of Selectmen, Office then starts putting them together into a warrant. That whole process takes several weeks. It might seem simple to you, but it's not. It takes a while to pull that together. Meanwhile, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and even the Redevelopment Board are waiting for these things to all get fit into a form so they could start their hearings. Now, what the Finance Committee is usually doing is, in last week of January, really pretty much throughout February, we're meeting with department heads, going with the manager, be with the school department, and trying to analyze all of the different budgets, because we take care of those in March. So what we're trying to do is fill out February with all the hearings on the warrant articles. And it's probably even a tougher job for the Selectmen than for us, but hearing these warrant articles and then trying to come up with a solution is usually not, "Let's just vote on it" type of thing. People have got to be discussed, other people have got to be consulted, other committees and stuff, to try to come up with an article which makes sense, which everybody's behind, so we don't fight all these things out before town meeting. Finance Committee's got to do the same thing, to a somewhat lesser degree, but, so all this whole process takes a great deal of time. Including just scheduling and getting people to come in. If, and so we, the Selectmen get their warrant out, their reports to you, and the Redevelopment Board, they mail them, so you have them at least a week before town meeting starts. The Finance Committee works very hard to have them on your seats the first night of town meetings, you have a couple of weeks to review them before they gets into the actual budgets. If you want to have that continue to happen, you can't squeeze us on the other side. A week might not seem like a great deal, but it is a great deal, you know, because we're being squeezed in April to get all of this done. So again, I'd urge you to vote for the amendment, making it simply the third Friday of January as opposed to the last Friday of January. People have got, as it is, six weeks, seven weeks to get their warrant articles in, they don't need an eighth week. So again, I ask you to vote for my amendment, making it the third Friday instead of the last Friday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rowe, you were next on the list. Yep, I'm keeping the list from last week.
Ms. Rowe, Precinct 6, I just want to echo what Al Tosti said. We had to have public hearings for forty warrant articles in five nights. We can do that, but I don't want to repeat everything he said, but it's terribly hard on the staff. It's not, it's not so much the Selectmen, it's our staff that suffer, so I ask you to please consider what Mr. Tosti said. Thank you.
Ms. Marr?
John Marr, Precinct 14, I'll be brief. I think the motion of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee is as ill-advised as it is well-intentioned. To me, this is a solution in search of a problem. The warrant is open now for upwards of six to seven weeks. As Mr. Tosti has indicated, Ms. Rowe has indicated, the warrant articles come in, no matter when you open it and when you close it, they come in at the very last week. And to further constrain the ability of the Selectmen, the Board of, the Finance Committee, and the Redevelopment Board, who have statutory time periods they have to comply with if zoning articles come in under Chapter 40A, to the extent that you try to constrain that, you're really not, it's not gonna be productive. Even now, the Selectmen come up and ask for postponements, because they simply have not had an opportunity to hear all the arguments pro and con on various articles. It sounds like a long time that they have, but they have to, people, ten registered voters, they have to schedule people to come in, they could discuss it, discuss this, they need more information from department heads and so forth, and it really, really takes a long time. And to the extent that you try, again, to sandwich, get it further out, and now it has surface appeal, "Oh, it's our warrant, we want to keep it open, townspeople," that's not really a realistic viewpoint at all. I guess I'm gonna support Mr. Tosti's motion, the amended motion, but the original motion of the Town Meeting Procedures Committees, do they really mean to have it in the first week of December and the last Friday in January? That could be as many as eight weeks. Why do you need to have the warrant open for eight weeks? Six or seven weeks is plenty. By the way, in some instances, and I sat where Ms. Rice sits now, and she reviews, as I did, the warrant articles for many years, and I can count on one hand the time the people have come up to me and said, "You know, the warrant closed too early, I wanted to put articles in," doesn't happen. And even if it does, in those few occasions when it does happen, the Selectmen under Chapter 39, as Ms. Rice will agree, I know, because I just spoke to her about it, Section 10 recites that the warrant is drawn under the hands of the Selectmen, meaning they can put in warrant articles in right up to the day that it goes to the print. And I think, by the way, it's been suggested by some members of the Town Meeting Procedures Committees, they don't like that to happen, the Selectmen have too much authority. Well, folks, it's the general laws. So in those particular occasions where someone missed it and it's important enough, the Selectmen can still insert it. The attempt by the Town Meeting Procedures Committee to squeeze the time between when the warrant closes and when the town meeting is, you know, it's well-intentioned, no question about that, but it's very ill-advised, and I would urge you defeat that, and if you're inclined to put any constraints here, then support Mr. Tosti's motion. Thanks very much.
Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9, longtime town meeting member. I seem to think that there are a bunch of red herrings swimming around here now, and no amount of herring aids will help this one. If you look at the warrant, go look at the seventy-six articles in the regular warrant and the seven articles in the special, only nine were submitted as ten registered voter articles, and that's all we are talking about, is the right of citizens to submit ten registered voter articles. As the distinguished former Town Council just said, the Selectmen can continue to insert past the, quote, "closing of the warrant" up until the time they send it to the printer. It is their right under the law. I also agree with Mr. Marr, it is the law, it's a Selectmen's responsibility, and I wouldn't want to address that. I think that that's the way the government was designed to work, and it should go that way. But what we're saying to the citizens is that we're gonna hold a meeting at the end of April, and if you want to get something on the agenda, you'd better get it in by sometime in January, second week, third week, first week, sometimes when we push it, and if it's a special, you've got to get it in between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. It tends to be a roadblock to citizen participation, and it is a needless roadblock. I would also like to point out to this meeting, sort of a continuing saga, if you are a reader of the Arlington list and have been since 2006, you would see a regular DAX that occurs around February, when the first Selectmen's agenda shows up, announcing warrant article hearings. In 2008, there was indeed a warrant article submitted, identical to this one, from the same group. It was announced as a warrant article hearing for the first meeting in February before any draft of the warrant was made available to the general public. This is a continuing problem. I would hope that this committee who's making procedural recommendations on behalf of the meeting, and I would hope the Selectmen who are listening, will do something to ensure that the legislature of this town knows what the content of this hearing is before we start to schedule hearings. I remind you of the public records and open meeting laws, which state that any time they put something in print and send it to the Selectmen, it is a public document. The Selectmen have the draft of the warrant in their hands. One of the members of the Selectmen has been kind enough to type in the text of the proposed articles that has not been made available to us. I think it is essential, and I hope the Town Meeting Procedures Committee insists upon it, that as soon as the articles are in print and delivered to the Selectmen, that they be made available in electronic format so that we can monitor them and monitor the hearings as well. Because it is inexcusable for every year since 2006 to go through the same thing where Peter Fuller has his annual question, you've got these warrant articles up for hearings, and nobody knows what they are. We deserve to know that, and I hope that as soon as it's closed, as soon as it's typed up, as soon as it's in print, as soon as it's a public document, it be made available to us electronically and not kept back for whatever reason it's kept back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Loretti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Loretti, Precinct 7. I rise in support of Mr. O'Connor's substitute motion and against Mr. Tosti's amendment. I would like to ask if anyone can recount all the problems that were had when the warrant closed in the year 2007? Can anyone remember all the problems? I didn't think so. It closed on the last Friday of January. And I say that because, as Mr. Schlickman just said, there's a lot of red herrings going around here. One of them was that we need to protect the Redevelopment Board. I can tell you, as the Chair of the Redevelopment Board this year, Redevelopment Board was completely taken aback by the early closing of the warrant. We had no idea it was going to close so early, and it caused a lot of problems for the Redevelopment Board, because the Selectmen did not notify the Board when it was going to be closed, or that it would be closed that early. It's actually very rare, pretty rare for citizens to submit warrant articles for zoning changes, and frankly, if they're submitted the last day of January, I don't believe that causes any problems whatsoever for the Redevelopment Board. What does cause problems is when town officials submit them well after the end of January, and that's the real problem, but that does not apply in this case. I don't see any problems whatsoever. Let me just read for you some of the closing dates for recent years. 2010, January 22nd. 2008, January 23rd. Another week, another eight days, is not going to make any difference. I urge you to support the original substitute motion of Mr. O'Connor and reject the amendment to Mr. Tosti. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LaCourte?
Annie LaCourte, Precinct 15, although I'm speaking as a Selectman at the moment. I voted against this article, and that is, I voted no action for it when it first came before us this year, and I voted for it, I voted no action against it when it was before us a few years ago, for one very simple reason. And that is because I believe that what we are trying to do here is enshrine a policy and a bylaw. That is, what should be a Board of Selectmen's policy about when the warrant opens and closes. Yes, and Mr. Warden is very amused, because he's right. This year, we closed the warrant sooner than our stated policy requires, and he had to remind us, and we had to reopen it. And hence, this article has been re-raised. I don't have trouble with the restrictions in the article, I do support Mr. Tosti's amendment, because I think that's more reasonable for my staff. But since people have raised this set of issues, I'd like to tease out a couple of things here. So the first thing is that we're balancing three sets of things here. One is making sure citizens have access to insert articles in the warrant. Another is making sure the Selectmen's office has enough time to do all the things they have to do to prepare the warrant, have the warrant looked at by the various people who look at it, redraft it if necessary, organize us for hearings, for us to hold the hearings, for the votes to get into the warrant and the warrant to get to the printer. So there is a big process crunch for them, and then there's the issue of when can we start holding the hearings so that we can further that process crunch along? And Mr. Schlickman is suggesting that we can't start the hearings until we have a draft warrant ready to go, and the problem with that is that the draft warrant doesn't come out until several weeks, at least several weeks, after we close the warrant, and the reason that we don't issue it as a public document at that point is that until certain sets of eyes have gone over it, and the Moderator and Mr. Tosti and Mr. Sullivan have all agreed about the order of the articles, we may be publishing a draft where literally the number on the article is going to change. So that, I think that that would be very confusing, particularly for those of you who are used to referring to articles by their number, if sometime between a draft that came out the first week in February and a draft that came out the second week and a draft that came out at the end, the warrant numbers were changing because the order in which we were planning to present the articles changed. So we're trying to balance all of these competing interests, okay? So if you don't trust us to do what we said we would do, and I must apologize, because I'm usually the niggle about this, because I think the warrant should be open for a while, then I suppose you might enshrine this in a bylaw rather than leaving it as a Selectmen's policy, but I personally think that's just, as a precedent, a bad idea. However, I would suggest then that you vote for Mr. Tosti's amendment, because there's plenty of time over that period of time. In practical fact, the only reason we leave the warrant open that long is because we all know there's this dead zone in the middle there, that is, the last two weeks in December and the first week in January, when everybody is busy with family and holidays and is not running around getting their ten signatures on warrant articles. And we need to leave the warrant hour open a few weeks after that in order to allow the citizens who suddenly go, "Oh, there's a thing I want to do, and I need to do a warrant article, and how do I go about this, and how do I get it to Juliana," and all that stuff, so that they have a little time to process that, even if we're already deep into January. Okay? But make no mistake, my staff needs a couple of weeks before they can put a draft out for you, and if you want the rule to be that we don't hold hearings until you have a draft in your hands, so you know what articles we're discussing, then it's really critical that we close that warrant either the second or third Friday in January, so that we have the time to get that draft to you before we start a warrant article hearings. I suppose it would be possible for us to hold the warrant open longer, but begin the hearings, but then you won't have a draft of the articles. Okay? And in fact, I'm informed by my Town Council, I was amazed to discover this, that we're not actually technically required by law to hold hearings on the Selectmen's articles. So, but we do try to hold a hearing on every article, including the citizens' articles and the Selectmen's articles and so on and so forth, and sometimes we even hold hearings on articles that aren't ours, just because we have opinions. So I hope we can have some balance here on this article, and I do urge you to consider seriously whether you want to enshrine a policy and a bylaw, because I've worked very hard over the course of my six years as a Selectman to see that we don't do that with many articles that come before us where we can solve the problem by just doing what's being asked of us, rather than creating a whole bylaw that will tie our hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaCourte. Mr. Healy? Mr. Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct 8, and a member of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee. Okay, just want to make a few points here in support of the committee's recommendation to you. Back in the, in the old days, when, say, Mr. Greeley's father was on the Board of Selectmen, the warrant was closed around the end of January. Elections were held on the first Saturday of March. Town meeting began on the second Monday of March. So you had about a, maybe a six-week interval between the closing of the warrant and the opening of town meeting. Now somehow, everything got done, and the Finance Committee got its act together, and the Redevelopment Board, and the, and the Selectmen, and, but then, it was decided that to avoid having to vote in the snow, we would move the election from the first Saturday of March to the first Saturday of April. There's a gentleman in the hall that spark-plugged that. And look, look what happened this year, we had snow. So it doesn't always work. But the, the point of it is that suddenly, another six weeks was added on to the period between the closing of the warrant and the beginning of the town meeting. And now we've heard that, well, they really need all these weeks to do all their things, and certainly we don't want to overburden anyone, but I just point out that it wasn't always thus, and somehow, the town survived for, really, centuries, without having this great gap between. And we're not trying to, the article before you is not trying to change that, really. I mean, one week, I can't see that one week would make much difference one way or the other. If subtracting a week will bring the affection of Mr. Tosti and his allies to the cause of this article, then, fine. And as far as not having hearings till the warrant is in final form, I think that's, I think that's unnecessary, I think you can deal with that. I'd just like to point out that when we brought this before the, before the Selectmen and the town meeting back in, I think it was, was it 2008? I did a little survey on the Moderators, the Moderators have a thing we call the gavel line, where we ask each other questions and get advice and so on, and of those that responded, Arlington had the second-longest window between the closing of the warrant and the beginning of the meeting of any other community. Stoughton has a lot of very odd and convoluted rules, and they, they had a longer period than we did. Now, of course, even though citizens are, and other boards, I mean, you say there's only nine articles submitted by ten registered voters, but there are also articles submitted by other boards, committees, and so on, such as the Town Government Reorganization Committee, the Redevelopment Board, and maybe Vision 2020 or something like that. So it's not just the citizens' articles which are put in kind of a straitjacket when you try to shut it off early. But the Selectmen, of course, have the right, as mentioned by Mr. Marr, to insert articles whenever they want, or up until it goes to the printer. And they say, "Well, you can, if, you know, if you have a real problem, you go to the Selectmen, they'll put it in for you." Well, they may or they may not, I think it maybe depends on who you are. And, and, but, back in 08 or 07, whenever it was, we, the Town Meeting Government, Town Meeting Procedures Committee withdrew or assented to a no action, didn't press the thing, because the Selectmen adopted a policy, and it said they will be open not later than the first week of December, nor closed earlier than the end of the third week, third full week of January. The Board will not depart from this policy without prior consultation with the Town Meeting Procedures Committee. Well, this, this year, in the sort of the run-up to the Christmas season, I read the Advocate, and it said, "The warrant has been opened and will close on January 7th." And I thought, "Man, man." And I looked back in the old records and dug up the policy, and sent an email to the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and said, "You know, what's going on here?" I thought we had agreed that it would, the warrant wouldn't close until the end of the third week. third week. And I didn't get a response, but the next thing I heard was that they were scheduling a special meeting on a Thursday afternoon at 3:00 or some strange time no one's ever met before. And, and they had a very quick meeting and they decided to, oh, that was a mistake. We'll, we'll make it the January 23rd or, or some date more in accordance with the policy. And, well, that's, that's good. And then we asked her, well, you know, what happened? And they said, well, we forgot. So that's why we thought it, it was important that policies, I guess, can be forgotten. And who, who in this hall has not forgotten something one time or another? Maybe your wife's anniversary or your birthday or something like that. That'd get you in real trouble. But the, the, the point is with the policy, you won't always, and I'm sure they'll be glad of it, they won't always have John Warden to send them an email and say, what happened to the policy? So we thought it was important and worthwhile that it be enshrined in the bylaw and then presumably they won't forget the bylaws and it will know. Everybody will know, there'll be a constant date that anybody can look at, it's going to be the same this year, next year, 10 years from now. We'll know when the warrant will open, we'll know when the warrant will close, and everybody will have a shot to get their articles in. So I appreciate your, ask for your support on the, the committee's recommendation under Article 21. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hugh McCory, Precinct 20. I'll be brief, I'll try not to repeat what's already been said. The purpose and intent of this article is basically to provide residents more time to file, file articles to the selectmen. I should also disclose that I'm also on the Town Procedures Committee. With respect to this selectmen, we, when we were deliberating this, we were, we essentially, to quote a verb, we, we trust the selectmen. We do, we trust the selectmen. When we were deliberating on this, you know, we're, we're not trying to put more pressure on the selectmen, we're just trying to leave, they give good guidance to the residents of Arlington of when, when the, when the article period should be opened. Basically, to, to Mr. Tosti's point, and I mean, I respect Mr. Tosti. If we were to close the warrant article period on the third Friday, if the first of January was, was a Friday, that means we'd be closing the article on the 15th of January since the first is a Friday, the eighth is a Friday, the 15th in theory, we'd be closing it. That's a bit early. We've, people have referenced holidays of, from different, of different categories. People are busy, families are busy. January is a good time for residents to, to get those signatures and submit. Also, this town, this town meeting has already required department heads to have submitted their budgets by, I think, the second day of, of January. So, you know, that should also keep things running, running smoothly and should help the selectmen. I guess you have to ask yourself, why was this article brought up? And it's not to add more pressure to the selectmen, it's really to give the residents a little bit of time in January to submit their 10 registered voter articles. So I ask you to, to support the amendment proposed by Mr. O'Connor. I asked you not to support the amendment proposed by Mr. Tosti with respect to the selectmen and the, and the proponent of that. So please support Mr. O'Connor's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCory.
Bill Hayner, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, going on with just what the last speaker said, you initially accepted Mr. Tosti's amendment based that it did not substantially change it, but what-
Not that it substantially changed it, that it was a simple change.
Okay, a simple change.
Simple change, it's-
So the, the actual, it, do you accept the, the fact that it could substantially change the, the effect of this?
It would, yeah.
Thank you.
But it, it's a simple change.
Okay, no, I understand. I'm not, I wanted to clarify. Another question, when an article is submitted, does it go directly to council or do all the articles have to be submitted before they go to council?
The articles are submitted to the selectmen's office and what Ms. Rice is available for is to help someone draft an article so that it's proper and that we would actually have something to vote on.
So once, just from my own understanding, once an article is submitted, the procedure can start right away if it's submitted as the warrant is open, am I correct?
You'd have to ask Ms. Kripelka and Ms. Rowe how the, what the internal procedures are on the selectmen.
Then I would ask that through the chair.
Yeah.
So, and then the, the basic process that has been outlined by several, several people starts right away. So the hearings could, can the hearings start once that process has got, the warrant has to close before the hearings?
Ms. Rowe or Ms. Kripelka, would you like to address Mr. Hayner's questions? These are things I don't know.
No, the, the warrant hearings can't begin until the warrant's closed.
Okay, so the, sent to you, legal, the drafting of it, the legal part of it, all that part can be done as the different articles come in?
Yes.
So what would be left for those articles would be the actual hearing?
Right. It's not so much the hearing part of it. It's, the time-consuming part is, number one, not everybody goes to the town council first before they submit their warrant article.
I understand, I understand that.
Okay.
Okay, but-
So it's the compiling of-
Where I'm coming from is that, based on another previous speaker, that a minority of these articles are coming from the 10 registered voters. That if we can get the town side, and granted, they're not all going to be coming in that first week, but if, if part of the different departments can be, get them in earlier, this may alleviate part of this problem. I'm in support of, of the maximum amount of time for the 10 registered voters. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And it's, we, the, the town departments are just like everybody else. They wait until the last minute as well.
Hmm.
No, they do, they do.
Good thing the clock's still running.
Excuse me, but correct me if I'm wrong, don't the town departments work for you folks?
Yes, but they're human beings.
Thank you. That's, that should not be the 10 taxpayers and the regular people's problem. That belongs to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jameson, Precinct 12. First off, I hope Mr. Warden is always here to correct the selectmen should they err in their ways. Tribute to the selectmen in that they do most of the time bend over backwards to address constituents' concerns. But I want, I want to just look at the flip side of what Mr. Schlickman talked about. Yes, there's only nine or 10 registered voter articles. There's nine or 10 from committees. Thirty of the articles are the selectmen and the managers. So my question is addressing the issue that came up when Mr. Hayner was up here, which was, why do we have to wait on those articles until the warrant is closed? Can someone explain that to me?
Ms. Rice?
I mean, fifty, fifty of the articles out of these 76 are either finance articles, many of which are placeholders that happen every year, and they're from the selectmen and the town manager. Why can't those hearings begin once the warrant is open? Can someone explain that to me?
Can you have, do, I think his question is, can you have hearings as the warrant articles roll in? Is that correctly, essentially it, Mr. Jameson?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Juliana Rice, Town Council. I think that would be exceedingly inefficient. Frequently, articles come in from various places that deal with the same subject. Articles may not be final until the warrant is closed and I can sort of only be in one place at once. And if I'm helping people to write articles, I can't really at the very same time prepare the selectmen's materials for the hearings. So I do the best I can. I start writing articles the beginning of December and I pretty much don't stop with warrant-related activities until June. So you could, but I think you'd end up repeating a lot of the hearings and having to call the same people back. And one thing that we try to do, once we have all the articles in one place, is to organize the hearings so one department head doesn't have to attend every selectmen's meeting for a month. So maybe you could, I don't think it'd be very practical, I think we'd miss a lot.
So, you know, I, I get upset sometimes when people fail to think out of the box. And this is, this is, this is a moment when I'm a bit perturbed by that. You know, lots of people are familiar, they, I don't have children, but lots of my friends have children who've applied to college. Many colleges have something called rolling admissions. I don't, and, and I understand that some people like to have a certain number next to their article and everyone gets perturbed about that. But I know the Finance Committee looks at a draft warrant that doesn't have, right, the same number. So I don't understand why, you know, with all due respect to Ms. Kripelka and her staff, who I admire immensely, why the, the main bodies can't get these regular articles taken care of. And maybe the Finance Committee can vote, you know, the, some of these placeholder things, they just have to fit in a number. But why, why this can't happen and that we can't have Mr. O'Connor's thing pass? So I'm, I'm in support of Mr. O'Connor's motion and I, I think that the, that the most vast huge majority of the articles come from people other than the towns' folks. So that the, the town manager has asked for the budget to be done early, we can begin reviewing articles the moment the warrant begins, I see no, no hindrance to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Joe Tully, Precinct 14. Can someone just clarify for me, the selectmen have a policy that's reflected in our Blue Selectmen's report. Mr. Tosti's amendment would make that window shorter, smaller, earlier, correct?
Their, Alan, you want, you want to speak to this? No. Their policy closes it, I believe, the last Fri-, the Friday of the last, the third full week.
The third full week. And Mr. Tosti's amendment is the third Friday, which potentially could come before the end of the third full week, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
In the scenario Mr. McCory pointed out, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Connor, a second time?
James O'Connor, Precinct 19. I rise again as part of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee because our charter, when you all voted in 2007, was to make town meeting more attractive. How do we have it more attractive? Because we feel useful. If we come before this body, we sit here and all the boards have already made all the decisions, we're nothing but what they used to call a Stamp Act Congress. I rose before you several times last year and said, we're asking to adopt resolutions which have recommendations that we haven't really fully debated. Our charge from the people when they vote for us, and in the gavel which I've been reading as your assistant moderator, I also read all these other towns of issues that come up. And they really address how people want to be heard. We need to keep the warrant open. You've heard Mr. Loretty, Mr. Warden, Mr. Schlickman and other people speak to the past history. The main problem here is we don't have anything in writing. And I hate to say this, but I went to the town clerk's office and I asked for the selectmen's procedure manual. There is no procedure manual. Unfortunately, the procedures get done each and every year as they go along as a course of business. I think Ms. Kripelka is a wonderful administrator. I would never fault her, but she can't be Mr. Warden and all of us together, now can she? The second thing is that I want to tell you, in putting up the minutes for the Town Meeting Procedures Committee, I had the opportunity to talk to Joan Roman. Joan Roman is one of our town employees that works on the website. It's really easy to work with. It's very easy to get things done. And all we have to do is use the technology before us, the internet, Microsoft Word. We're not using punch cards anymore. We're being asked, you know, to, as boards, to give to the manager copies of reports, copies of budgets that are balanced beforehand. I happen to know that back in 2008, the Board of Selectmen met and discussed an article that Annie LeCorte recommended for all of us to consider in that subsequent year, and that was the technology developments for the town. Because the board looks at these issues all year long, we're not in a vacuum of just saying, January, December, we talk about the warrant. We should be looking at it all year. If there's an article that somebody didn't prevail upon this year, we have the right to change that. We have a way to recall. But we're more learned about the procedures because we sit here and get copies of the finance report. We get copies of the selectmen's report. Not everybody in the town gets one. And I got to tell you, Arlington's very fortunate because one of the towns raised Cain because their Board of Selectmen decided to save money and said, we're not going to send selectmen's reports or FinCom reports or any other reports to anybody in the town anymore for an open town meeting because it costs too much money. And that's unfortunate. But we're here in Arlington, we have a wonderful supply of resources, we have an incredible array of volunteers, and I think we owe it to the taxpayers to let them have an open warrant for as long as feasibly possible. It seems it's worked before and as Mr. Warden, who has many more years than I have standing before you, said, it used to work when there was only six weeks for a warrant to be processed. Why can't it be done now? So please vote for my motion to keep the warrant open till the last Friday in January. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Markey, Precinct 9. I'm wondering what specifically we are doing by amending the bylaws. And I'm an extremely intelligent person, but I'm not a lawyer. And I think that explanations should be offered when we are asked to amend the bylaws so that people understand more what we are trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Deist, Precinct 13. I speak to you in the context of having been on the Finance Committee for, I guess it's more than 20 years now, and realizing that the process by which the Finance Committee does what it does has gotten more and more complex as we've had more and more difficulties with the budget. The hearings and our own meetings with department heads begin to crowd our time rather severely. Alan spoke about it. But if you truly want us to try to do the job that I think we can do very well, which is to try hard in the budget to balance the priorities against the money that's available, then we really do have to have the time to be able to deliberate about the budgets. And that, if, if that time is to be there, that means that in addition to that time, we have to have the time for hearings. And I can simply tell you that it gets rather hectic toward the end of our process, especially for us to put out to you the, what I think is a quality Finance Committee report. It really is very, very difficult for us to do the job in the time available to us. It isn't just hearings. It's hearings, it's deliberation to try to figure out how to balance the budget in the face of the pri-, in, in the context of the priorities. And as well, meeting many, many times with, with the, the various directors of, of divisions of, of the town in order to be able to try to understand what it is that we might or might not want to do in order to try to achieve the priorities. So if you want- So, if you want the quality report that you've seen in the past from the Finance Committee, maybe I'm pretentious to think that it's a quality report, but I think it is, then, quite frankly, I strongly urge you to vote for Alan Tosti's amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. West? Paul, had you hand up? No? Okay. Mr. McKinney?
Lawrence McKinney, 7th Precinct, land of horrible sidewalks. First, I have not seen this even brought up, and perhaps that's far outside the box to think of this, but as William Ockham once spoke, "The simplest answer to a question is sometimes the best." It's apparent here that everyone seems to be rushing to get things through the door before it comes down. As one of those people with getting the 10, and therefore probably being 10% of that entire problem, I sort of wonder why we just don't open the warrant soon as the town meeting is over. We can close it anytime we want to. And that's when things have to start, but, you know, give them a whole lot of time if they want. That's one reason I think we should probably think about doing that. The second part is that this is sort of a niggling thing. We don't have the time. I want my staff to have more time. This is the town of Arlington, for goodness sake. We can find some part-time people from a job assistant bureau for that kind of work if we seriously need it. Of course, if they could go sooner, we could all work a little faster. And it would be helpful if they were always there. I was making a bad joke the other day that Mr. Present's first name should be, Mr. Greeley not. Because every time we see things, Mr. Greeley's not present. I don't see him here either. Scope! Okay, well, if we are to believe that the people are having difficulty finishing the work on time, perhaps if a roll call were held and they didn't do it until they were all there, they could do it that much faster. Second, thirdly, having received one tongue-lashing from Mr. Tosti, with my respect amazingly for getting an amendment in late, and a few more later on, I don't think that we would have a town meeting if Mr. Tosti didn't get an opportunity to tongue lash a few people once a year. And if we keep it the way it is--
Mr. McKinney, Mr. McKinney--
Yes?
Keep your remarks not ad hominem.
All right.
You're getting very close to the point where I get mad.
I'm speaking as a sidewalk. At any rate, I would have you support Mr. Connors and go with the committee and give us the time that we need to do as much as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lavalli?
Brian Lavalle, Precinct 15. Motion to terminate debate on all matters under this article. Thank you.
Motion to terminate debate on all matters for the article. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No.
Debate is terminated. We have -- I terminated debate. You lose. We have before us the recommended vote of the Town Meeting Procedure Committee by Mr. O'Connor, and the amendment by Mr. Tosti, changing the last Friday to the third Friday. First, we're going to vote on Mr. Tosti's amendment. All in favor of Mr. Tosti's amendment, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
My opinion, it is defeated. We have now before us the recommended vote of the -- sir? Now, I see three people arising, so, oh, well, yeah, come on, guys. All righty. Everybody opposed to Mr. Tosti's amendment, everybody for Mr. Tosti's amendment, please rise. All in favor of Mr. Tosti's amendment? Eight. Mr. Schlickman has eight. That's on the left. Up front?
Eight.
Mr. O'Connor?
Sixteen.
Mr. Tremblay?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Mr. McCabe?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. All opposed to Mr. Tosti's amendment, please rise. Sixty-one? Sir?
Zero.
Zero up front. Mr. Schlickman?
Thirty.
Thirty. Mr. O'Connor?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Mr. Tremblay?
Twenty-nine.
Mr. McCabe?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. The vote is in the negative, 110, in the negative, 61, in the positive. The motion is defeated. We have now before us a recommended, excuse me, the substitute motion of the Town Meeting Procedure Committees by Mr. O'Connor. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
My opinion, it is an affirmative vote. That brings us back to Article -- Yes, sir. The motion is substituted. It didn't get -- oh, we have to do it again? Oh, my goodness. Well, they didn't have a motion. The Selectmen did not have a motion or recommended vote. Thank you, sir. That brings us back to 17, which was on the second night, the 27th. They put a postponement on. And I understand Mr. Seer wants to talk.
Mike Care.
Care. Thank you.
Mike Care, Arlington Redevelopment Board. We're back to Article 17, the temporary seasonal signs at athletic fields. We're back after having worked with Town Council, the original proponent, the planning director, and the moderator with a substitute article that has been unanimously approved by the Redevelopment Board. There is one small change to the substitute article that was left on your chairs, realized after the fact that I'm a real bad typist, and missed one change that was in the R vote that did not make it into the vote that's on your chairs. I just want to point it out. It's the one that you'll see up here. And what it is, is the difference is simply that instead of saying, "At a fenced athletic field with a permanent structure to seat more than 300 persons," it should have said, "With one or more permanent structures to seat more than 300 persons." And that flows in two different places within the vote itself, and then there's one place that's affected within the red line that is shown in your vote. So, I apologize for any confusion that that might make. My typing could certainly be better. This article looks a lot different than the one that was presented earlier, but with Town Council's help and all the different folks that I mentioned, it accomplishes what we believe the original intent was, and it's a good article and will make for a good bylaw. The article would allow for temporary seasonal signs at fenced athletic fields with a seating capacity of more than 300. The season that we're talking about would be between March 15th and December 15th. And any signs would have to be part of a plan that would be subject to the special permit process of the R, including the public hearings associated with the plan. The notion is that the plan itself would be part of the special permit, and then the signs would have to be put up in accordance with that plan. The article would accommodate signs at the Pierce Field at Arlington High School in order to raise funds for the schools. That's really all I've got to say about the article. I would ask Mr. Moderator, if we would like Mr. Stephen Harrington, the original proponent of the article, to speak to the substitute motion, and then after that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that folks might have.
Mr. Harrington's a town resident. He can come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stephen Harrington, 45-year town resident. I'm the original proponent of this article. Actually, I came from the Arlington Athletic Advisory Committee. It was interesting to listen to the discussion about the citizen initiative warrant articles that preceded this, since this is a citizen initiative warrant article. We started on December 16th, when we were empaneled, and we knew we wanted to raise funds to support athletics at the Arlington High School. And when we did that, we thought, we looked through what had been done in the past, and we saw that these types of warrant articles to do advertising had been before you in the past. And so, we thought this was a good way to raise funds for the schools. And so, what we did is we actually submitted an article to our group, then we talked to the chair of the Redevelopment Board, and that took about a week. And then we talked to Town Council and had her approve the original language, and that took about a week. And then we went out and got signatures. And we got 72 signatures in one weekend. So, there was widespread support in the community immediately to do this. If we had had the warrant open for a couple of weeks, we probably could have gotten 700 signatures. Everyone we've talked to has really supported this article. And I think that I don't have a lot to add, other than to say that if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. This intent of this article is to have advertising for the spectators and the participants on the playing fields at Arlington High School and nowhere else. So, we're looking to have people who are coming to sporting events at the playing fields behind the high school see these sponsorship signs. And if you, what we're really looking to do is have a very tasteful set of sponsorship signs that mostly display the logo of the high school, the colors of the high school, along with the sponsor's name and the sponsor's symbol in some cases. So, I ask that you support this article, and that it's really a good thing for us to be able to raise some funds for the school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We had a list before. I'm just going to go keep the list that we had and add the new people we're on. If your questions have been answered, feel free to say pass. Mr. Schlickman? Mr. Kleiman? You pass. Mr. Berkowitz?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Bill Berkowitz, Precinct 8. I'm a little confused about the difference between the wording of the substitute and what we're, and the original wording in the ARB report that we originally have. Specifically, in the original ARB report, and I'm looking at bottom of page 15, if people have that, where it refers to changes in language of, in Section 7.12, and on the top of page 16 refers -- excuse me, on the top three lines, it refers to page 16, underlined, "Each sign shall contain the name and graphical symbol of the school under sponsorship and may contain the name and trademark of the organization sponsoring the school." However, in the current recommended vote, that vote, recommended vote, seems to refer to a different section, and I'm not reading the same restriction on the signage that would be contained in that recommended vote. So, as I'm reading this, and hope I can be corrected if I'm wrong, the current substitute motion is less restrictive and less specific than the original, which seemed to me a preferable way to go.
Mr. Care?
As I mentioned, we worked with a lot of parties in coming up with the new language. So, you're right. It's a true substitute motion, dealing with things differently. One of the things that was of concern was some content regulations with respect to signs and that type of thing. So, in working with Town Council, it was determined that the way that it's structured now, without those same restrictions, was a better way to do it. Once again, working with Town Council, as you know, we had the issue before.
Given that, it's not clear to me what types of signs would be permitted under this new substitute motion. So, for example, would it be required that the insignia of the school be kept, as was the case in the previous motion?
It's our expectation, but you're correct. The bylaw does not say that.
Could somebody put up a sign saying, just for example, "Drink Coca-Cola," without other language?
The expectation is not that, but according to this bylaw, you're correct, there's no restrictions on content. We would expect the policy of the school department to address many of these different things.
So, Mr. Haner thinks he can answer a question.
Bill Haner, Precinct 2, and school committee member. And I would ask the other school committee members that are present to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there is a policy in the works dealing with this particular issue that would come from the school committee. I'll stand corrected if I'm wrong in that. But it deals just with content of signs and things of this nature for the purpose of advertising on school property.
And that may be, but this is what we're voting on right here and now.
I understand, but being school property, that the actual content would be of it, further restrictions would be within the school committee's province. If your concern is that an inappropriate sign or someone else might be free to do that because you feel that it's open-ended by the bylaw, I tell you that the school committee will be dealing with that aspect of it. And it's not in place as yet, but they are dealing with it in a positive manner.
I hear that, and thank you. But as of now, given the votes that we are called to make at this town meeting, I guess I'm regarding the original that we were asked to vote on back in the ARB report as superior to the construction in this substitute. And I would want to be convinced otherwise before I could vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Still Loretty?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Loretty, Precinct 7. I rise in support of the substitute motion of the Redevelopment Board. However, I would like to clarify a couple of things. And I'm not sure if it was clear to people when this article first came up, that someone made mention of the fact that the Zoning Board of Appeals has already granted a special permit for these signs or this type of signage at the high school. And through you, Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask whether Town Council believes that this, that passage of this substitute motion of the Redevelopment Board is necessary?
Madam Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Juliana Rice, Town Counsel. I'm not sure that I understand what is meant by necessary, but I do think that the relief that the proponents were seeking, which was the right to put sponsorship signs up around Pierce Field, has already been granted, and that this zoning bylaw change is therefore superfluous.
Mr. Moderator, could you, through you, could I ask whether Town Council believes that it's possible for the Zoning Board of Appeals to allow non-accessory signs by special permit?
Ms. Rice, do you have an opinion as to that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Juliana Rice, Town Counsel. I do have an opinion that the Zoning Board of Appeals may do so. However, the special permit decision that I have reviewed, that I believe is on file with the clerk's office, the Zoning Board of Appeals granted the permit for these signs as accessory signs.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I guess I'm really concerned about the special permit that the Zoning Board of Appeals has granted for these signs. And the reason is that in that decision, they cite a memorandum from Town Council stating that, in her opinion, as she just said, "Non-accessory signs can be permitted by special permit of the Zoning Board of Appeals." And here's the problem with that. You know, we talk about non-accessory signs. That may not make a whole lot of sense to people, but both the best and the worst example of a non-accessory sign is a billboard. people, but both the, the best and the worst example of a non-accessory sign is a billboard. And in the Arlington zoning bylaw, the last section of the chapter on signs is a page and a half on non-accessory signs, and it deals with the regulation of such signs, indeed the regulation of billboards.
Yeah.
And it's something that our former planning director, Mr. McLennan, has put in. And it has withstood legal challenge, it has withstood the test of time, it has served as a model for other communities. And if you don't think it's, has been effective, I would ask you to think of how many billboards, how many non-accessory signs we see in this town.
Can you bring it within the scope?
Yes, and I'm coming to that. And, and the opinion that Ms. Rice has just expressed, and the opinion of the, of the zoning board of appeals effectively eliminates those protections that Mr. McLennan has put into the zoning bylaw that have been so effective over the years. So one of the reasons I'm going to ask you to support the substitute motion of the redevelopment board is not that it's because it is superfluous, on the contrary, I think it's very necessary. And by approving that substitute motion, you will reduce and hopefully eliminate the, any precedential value of the decision of the zoning board of appeals. And in fact, at this time, that decision of the zoning board of appeals is subject to appeal. It's been filed with the town clerk, I believe there's a few days left for anyone to appeal it. In some ways, I hope they do, because it is such a bad decision and set such a bad precedence for the town. But if that doesn't happen, and frankly, it's probably unlikely that it will, I think it's really important that town meetings show the support for this substitute motion to negate any of the, or try to negate any of the bad precedents that that decision creates. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the list is with Weber.
Janice Weber, Precinct 21. I don't know if this is an order, can I ask any questions about the signs rather than the zoning part?
Are there any proposed signs yet? Very, well, I'll allow, but let's not really get off with this.
No, I just want-
Let's talk about the article, go ahead.
I just want to know if the money that they're going to collect for these signs is going directly to the fees for sports?
No, that's not, that doesn't have to do with the zoning.
Okay, are we-
Who's collecting the money?
Yeah, no one knows.
Whoever gets the signs, it's sort of school department or somebody would do that. Yeah. This would allow them to do it.
But-
But I don't know who actually is going to do it.
Are we going to be able to find that out at some point? Because I don't think the school committee should have any money other than the fees directly to the sporting department, the athletic department.
Ms. Chairman, do you have any, Ms. Rowe? Who's going to actually let the signs? Okay, so it's actually, it's the school department, because it's their property. So you'd have to go to the school committee.
So we have no say in where the money's going from this?
Yeah, you've got to go to the school committee. We were only allowing it to happen. Mr. Haner, have you voted on a procedure yet? Yes or no? They're talking about what they're going to do, I'm sure.
Bill Haner, Precinct 2, on the school committee. What was your question again?
Are you guys going to be the ones who sell the signs?
I, I will stand corrected again with my other school committee members. As of right now, money coming in under this would go to the school committee. But it is my understanding there will be a proposal from the advisory committee to set up an athletic trust, and that is, these are the people that have brought forward with the redevelopment board this article. And this would be in the future to go to that trust. Again, it will take a vote.
Okay.
Nothing has happened as yet, but this is the intent of this as of right now. And again, I will stand corrected by my school committee members.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Weber?
Partially, but also, a sign's going to be, is the zoning bylaw going to affect any other fields like Spy Pond, which isn't in-
No, that doesn't fit the criteria.
And just, who's responsible if the signs are, you know, tagged?
That's going to be whoever's responsible for renting them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. What? Sir, to, what purpose do you rise? Point of order, that means you're like hot or cold or can't hear.
Well, I hope this isn't continuing debate, you can put me on the list if you like, but my understanding is the warrant article says any fenced-in field with a capacity of 300 people. It doesn't limit it to property under the jurisdiction of the school committee, does it?
What other field in Arlington fits that description?
I would think Spy Pond Field does it, minimum.
It's not fenced in on all four sides. It's got a fence along-
Did the article say four sides?
Fenced in. Come on, if you have a pool fenced in means all around your property. The only fence on Spy Pond Field is right in front of the Boys and Girls Club. Not along the bike path.
Continuing along the edge of the tennis courts and then back along whatever the street is there behind it.
No, no, it ends at the tennis courts. Courts are fenced in.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only one that fits the definition. That's what took them three days to work on. Anything else, Ms. Weber?
What about Summer Street, isn't that fenced in?
Nope.
Gee, it has been ever since I've been here.
Nope. Okay. Next on the list, Mr. Trembley. Yeah. Okay.
Ed Trembley, Precinct 19. I had actually several questions.
Mr. Trembley has the floor, please.
One of them is, I'm not sure why we're, could somebody answer why we're concerned about the other parks and fields in town and why it's limited to just, to 300 and just Pierce Field? I mean, I had one of, one of my neighbors tell me that the, even the Little League Park in Cooperstown has signs on it. And if we could generate some more money on some of the other fields, why not?
Mr. Kair? Well, he could, he could actually make a motion to change the article to include every park in town if he wanted, but that'd be kind of wild.
Yeah, the scope of the article was Pierce Field, and that's what we were dealing with, among other things. But it's also the recommended vote of the ARB to, to accommodate that particular field for now. It might make sense in the future, but this is something new.
I think that'd be an issue for another day, you're telling us.
No, I understand that, but I would like to, to get people thinking about expanding this program a little bit. I had another question. How much money do you think the, does the school committee think that they might make from this?
Mr. Harrington, you had an estimate of that, I believe?
Somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000 per year on an annual basis.
Okay. And my recollection is that, that the town manager said that if somebody were to vandalize these sound, these signs, it would be the town's responsibility to correct it. So does that-
No, I, I think that's going to be one of the school committee's votes that they're going to take as they set their policies. It wouldn't be the town's, because it's not the town's property.
Well, or the schools.
Mr. Haner's going to give us another answer about what the school committee's going to vote on.
Bill Haner, town meeting member from Precinct 2, and just as a town meeting member with a minimal legal experience, all you have to do is write the contract and put that on the person that's renting it. If they want the sign, they're responsible for dealing with anything on it. And if they, if there's, if the sign gets tagged in the contract, it says if you don't remove it in an appropriate sign, the sign's down. So it falls to the person that's, it's, the way the contract is written, take the burden off the person that's renting the sign, put it on the person that is, I mean, off the person's property, put it on the person that's renting it.
Well, I recommend if the school committee's writing the contract, you get that in there. Mr. Trembley, continue.
Well, I mean, if the school, the athletic fees make a little bit money and there's no liability, it sounds great to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam? Yep.
Is this the right microphone?
You have anyone you want.
Susan Stamps, Precinct 3, new Arlington resident and new town meeting member. So, my reading of this article is that any actual permission to erect any signs is subject to a special permit, is that correct?
Mr. Kair, he says yes.
So if that's correct, there would be a public hearing, so there can be discussions of what the sign, the signs look like, or that sort of thing.
Correct.
I think there is some concern that this is kind of open-ended in the, in the describing that the signage plan will apply to, quote, "a fenced athletic field with a permanent structure to seat more than 300 persons." Everybody's been very clear tonight that they're talking about Pierce Field. So I would move to amend this, this, this motion to delete the two places in this motion that those words that I just said, and replace them with Pierce Field.
I think, before we take a second on that, that was why we adjourned, because we'd be engaging in spot zoning, which we're not allowed to do. Ms. Rice, is that true? Or am I making stuff up?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Juliana Rice, Town Council. It is true, Mr. Moderator, that one of the concerns that I had raised with the proposed vote in its original form was that it would be subject to disapproval by the Attorney General as spot zoning.
Ms. Stamps, you still have the floor.
Well, I guess the inference is that we can't do spot zoning, so I'll withdraw my proposed amendment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Logan?
I just had a question, if there was any legal challenge to this, would the school committee have to deal with this, or would the town?
It's a zoning bylaw, that would be the town's issue. Ms. Rice would have something to do for a few days.
So for example, if the school committee deemed that there was an inappropriate sign placed there, and someone placed a First Amendment challenge to it, the town would defend that?
I don't see how they could do that, but I have no idea. I'm not going to put the cart before the horse.
Just a hypothetical.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith? I don't know which Mr. Smith it was. You don't predict, you don't have anything, okay. Mr. McCabe? You wanted to talk last week, you still want to talk, Harry? No? Pass. Mr. McCoury?
Pass.
Pass. Janet Leary?
Jeannie.
Jeannie, I'm sorry. Oh, we have to wait for the mic.
Um, Jeannie Leary, Precinct 19. I have a lot of concerns about this new wording of fenced field with, I, see, I can't even read this, I wish we had it handed out, but it, a fenced athletic field with a permanent structure to seat more than 300 persons? To me, this could mean the Summer Street Field, because the rink can fit more than 300 people, even though they're not with the field, even though they're not with the baseball field. And as in a direct abut are to the, the Summer Street Fields, I think as taxpayers, the residents who live around the sports complex put up with a great deal of late-night noise, we have two lit baseball fields, we have the rink going past midnight 10 months here.
I don't think that the, well, first, Summer Street's not fenced in on all four sides, so it wouldn't, and I think it's specifically-
Well, Bucks Field is, isn't it?
Um, Mr. Kair, would the skating rink qualify the Summer Street Field under the way this is written and way the board would issue the special permit?
No, we would not expect that field, given that it's got only one very small outside bleacher on it. And we would not consider the rink seating to be part of the athletic field.
Oh, good. Oh, good, I'm glad to hear that, because they did put up signs there years ago.
Yeah, don't, don't know about years ago.
I really liked your approach when you were saying that you were going to have the signs face the spectators, you know, so they weren't facing people's homes, because it, you know, no one wants to look out their windows at billboards, you know? So that was very nice, the way you said you were going to do that. And I appreciate that. I was just envisioning these billboard signs all over the place, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Not our expectation.
Great. And one other point, I did watch the school committee meeting when they brought this up about the vote, and to me, it, I forget your name, sorry, it appeared very ambiguous, what, where the funds were going to go, how it was going to be handled, that, you know, it was very, very ambiguous. I was kind of surprised that they knew so little about it. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Quarrel?
Joe Quarrel, 21 Millet Street, member of the Arlington School Committee. I just stand to, I believe this may have been stated when this article originally came up, I just wanted to make clear, the school committee does support the article that is before you, would ask you to, to pass this. I think you've heard the estimate of the athletic advisory committee on the potential revenue. I think you all know also the strain that we've been under. We've tried very hard not to cut any of our sports offerings, but that's come at a great cost to the participants in the form of increased athletic fees. I know there are a lot of questions about the direction of fees, that's not the purview of this article, but just so you know, that would require a vote of the school committee to appropriate those funds. I believe it's been the sense of our discussions that those funds would be directed towards fee relief, but again, that, that would require debate and a vote of the school committee. There is also an alternate approach which we could take and which I expect we would be discussing with the athletic advisory committee, which would be the potential of entering a memorandum of understanding with the Arlington Sports Foundation, which was newly created, which may act, could potentially act as the, the agent for selling the advertising here, under an MOU with the school department and an understanding of, of where funds might be directed. As far as the, the type of advertising that would be allowed, you know, Mr. Haner is correct, we do have a policy on advertising on sports fields. It does require that any signage be in good taste. It also gives the superintendent the authority to implement procedures to ensure that as well. So that is the way that we handle that, that's delegated to the superintendent. However, it is possible, and it is in our purview, to place more specific restrictions on the, on the types of advertising that might, might appear as well through policy. So I hope that, that adds a little bit of light to some of the questions that have arisen, but I would ask you to please vote affirmatively on the, the article, and I want to thank the redevelopment board and especially Mr. Kair for all of the, and Ms. Rice for all of the work they've gone, they've put into this, and Mr. Harrington for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Order or information or whatever you call that correction?
See me during the break.
You keep saying fenced in athletic field and the-
All right, well.
Barbara Bolts, Precinct 9. You keep referring to a fenced in athletic field, but the motion says a fenced athletic field, which is quite a different matter.
I will inquire what they mean by fenced.
So that, and then also, neatly, uh-
Ms. Bolts, you're, you're on the list.
Grammar thing, if you're going to say one or more, you have to put an S in a parentheses after the word "structure." You cannot say one or more permanent structure. It has to be, the S in a parenthesis is not there. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make that change if it's deemed correct. This gentleman right back here in the next to the ESU, then we're going to take a break after you. Yep? Pass. Okay, we're going to take a break, come back in 10 minutes. Ah, okay, we're going to take a break, come back in 10 minutes.
Please come in. Yes, sir? Please, please come take your seats. Ms. Rice has further pointed out to me in answer to Ms. Bolt's question. Pierce Field is the only one that further qualifies as it's a, and Ms. Leary's question. It's the only one in an R1 zone. All, no other fields are within the R1 which it specifies in the vote. Mr. Good? Way to go. Hey, Andy, is Dave Good out there? Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Good, you're up.
Mr. Good, you are the next on the list.
I'm your pastor.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna have to then entertain a motion from Mr. Tosty to table. You want Minuteman? This could, yeah, it's gonna move for a while.
You want me to table or try moving the question?
You're not up, Les.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, I ask you, the superintendent for Minuteman has been here. I ask for your permission to put articles 22 through 17. We're on 17 now, right? 17 and articles 22 through 60 back up on the table in order to take up Article 61, the Minuteman assessment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So tabled.
Mr. Moderator, for myself, Steve DeCoursey from the Finance Committee and the Superintendent, I ask for an additional five minutes. I don't think we'll use it, but we'd like a total of 15 minutes for the three of us.
Second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have your 15 minutes, sir.
Okay. I would like to ask Steve DeCoursey to come before the committee to discuss the reasons for the Finance Committee's support of the Minuteman budget.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve DeCoursey, precinct two. The Finance Committee is recommending an appropriation for Minuteman this year of That's a decline of about 14% from the appropriation last year. And I'm just gonna walk through briefly what the, how the appropriation or the assessment for Arlington is determined. Last year, it's based on the enrollment of in-district members, communities as of October 1st. And as of October 1st, 2010, there were 115 full-time equivalent students from Arlington. The year before, there were 131. So there's been a decline in the Arlington population. However, there's been an increase in the in-district enrollment, which is very good news for Arlington because we are a smaller percentage of the overall district at this point. A year ago, we were at 430 for in-district. This past year is 445. So the district has actually increased by 3%. We've gone down, and as our percentage has gone down, our assessment has gone down. One other thing to, wanted to point out, we're voting a number, which is the Arlington assessment. By voting the Arlington assessment, we're actually voting acceptance of the Minuteman budget. And the Minuteman budget this year, we'll introduce Dr. Boquillen who will run through that with you. The overall budget for Minuteman this year is $16.4 million. It's an increase of 1% from last year, just over 1% from, from a year ago. Dr. Boquillen will run through numbers for the past few years, but he has been on the job for four years. He's going into his fifth year. And since he has taken over at Minuteman, we have had the pleasure of, of meeting with him every year. And every year, he brings us better news in terms of what the assessments per pupil is doing. It's, it's coming down. The number of students at the school has, has gone up. And while it's not perfect, and while there are a lot of people that, that would like to see the, the per pupil numbers even lower, it's a, it's a very positive trend. And, and it's a, it's been a very good working relationship that we've had with Minuteman. And, and we look forward to continuing that relationship going forward. So at, at this point, I'd like to introduce Dr. Ed Boquillen, the Superintendent of Minuteman and visiting his 16th community tonight. Not, not all on the same evening, but this is the last town meeting that he's visiting.
Dr. Boquillen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Steve and Al. I'm gonna go briefly through the slides, and I'm, pardon if I turn around. Next slide. This is our mission. I'm not, I reordered the slides because it made more sense, so I'm not used to this yet, even though this is my last town meeting. Next slide, please. Recently enrollment trends. Steve mentioned our enrollment, and I want to give you some good news and some okay news. Next slide. You can see overall, the district is up about 10%. Our member towns are up about 3%. We've had an increase in non-member communities as well as what we call the big three, which is Waltham, Watertown, and Medford. We're continuing to make some efforts in terms of recruiting and marketing and accessing more families and talking about Minuteman. And we've really appreciated the cooperation we've had in Arlington. It's been exemplary. Next slide. If we break down this year's enrollment increase, I'll just ask you to look at the first gray bar, which looks at our freshman class. You can see that we've had a 63% increase in our freshman class this year. Our nine through 12 enrollment was up slightly, about 6%. Member and non-member postgraduate students were up significantly, about 17% from member towns, and almost doubled from non-member communities as well. I'll talk a little bit more about our postgraduate tuition initiative in a moment. But overall, our head count is up about 11%. And I put the freshman retention rate on there because that's one of the goals that I'm evaluated on as Superintendent, and it went up 106%. Next slide. These are some of the achievements of our students. I'm hoping as the years go by and our enrollment and goes up and our finances get more in line, I'll spend more time on this, but we've had a, a great class last year. 72% of them, I believe, went on to continuing education in two-year and four-year institutions, the highest in the state of Massachusetts. 19% directly into work. I think that's a reflection of the economy. Next slide, please. This is another look at our placement rate over the last four years overall, about a 96% placement rate. Next slide. This is our special ed enrollment. It's a little difficult to see, but Minuteman is on the far right. And all the way going to the far left are some other vocational technical schools. And Arlington is on the far left. Minuteman has about 47% of the student body on an IEP. It's the highest in the state as well. But I'm also proud to report that this year, 100% of our 10th graders passed the MCAS English Language Arts on the first try. 97% passed the math on the first try. Thank you. Next slide. Cost control initiatives. Next slide. This is our five-year historical budget. You can see after several years of increases, this year that we're in in particular, we made some pretty significant reductions to right-size Minuteman. We, our budget was reduced by about 7%. Next year, we're anticipating a, a 1% increase in our overall budget at $16.4 million, still lower than five years ago. Next slide. We've done this through a combination of attrition and active riffing. Our overall professional staff is down over the last few years, but it's down in a way that has not hurt students, has not hurt student performance. And we need to continue to do this and be mindful of it as we right-size the building. When I say right-size, we have the right amount of staff, the right mix of programs, and I think that's a cost-effective way to continue. Next slide. Administration. We've cut our administration in half over the last five years. I'll let you know next year if that was a good move. Next slide. And this is a real telling figure. This is the actual dollars of salary that we spend, the total dollars of salary. And you look next year, we'll be at 9.1 million of salary, and that's lower than we were by over a million dollars five years ago. Next slide. This looks at our foundation rate since comparison to other regional vocational schools, as well as the state average of vocational education in general. And you can see Minuteman in the blue is about $14,900, a few hundred dollars above the average regional career or technical high school. There are 26 regional career and technical high schools in Massachusetts. The state average for vocational is down a bit because it accommodates all the different models by which regional vocational, by models that vocational education is delivered, including collaboratives and comprehensive high schools and smaller city vocational schools, as we have in Waltham and Medford and Newton. Next slide. Right sizing. Next slide. One of the impacts, of course, of increasing enrollment and reducing staffing is that our student-to-teacher ratios by class size is, is coming back up to where it should be. The dark blue on the left is last year. The lighter blue is this year that we're in right now. And you can see in math and science, we've had a, an increase in the average class size. And I'll remind you that 47% of those classes have students that are in, receiving special services of some kind. Next slide. This is just another look at what the budgeted per pupil increase had been over the last few years and where we see it going in the trend line. Next year FY12, we're very conservative in our estimates of about a 2% increase in enrollment. We're on track for a, a larger increase than that. Right now, as we look at the freshman class for next year, we have 350 applications for about 240 openings. So we're gonna have a real waiting list, it looks like, and that will be mostly non-member students. Our member students are now in a place where we have to give those students priority, and we're turning away others because of that. On the postgraduate side, our applications have increased 300% from last year to this year. These are adults that come to Minuteman and receive a vocational technical education, and we are gonna be beginning to charge them tuition, which I'll talk about in a minute. Next slide. There's still a, a strong belief that it's cheaper to be a non-member than a member of the Minuteman Regional School District. Next slide. You can see over the last few years, we've tried to change that dynamic. So towns that are not members of Minuteman are paying significantly more next year. The average student, which is the lower cost, is about $23,500. And if that student is on an IEP, it's about $26,000. This is the total cost to that non-member district. We charge a base tuition next year of about $18,100. If the student is on an IEP, there's another $5,000 on top of that. And then the district has to pick up all the transportation costs associated with that, which average about $3,000, $3,200 per student. So there are benefits of membership. Next slide. Coming to the budget, next slide. When we began our budget process, we looked at a level service budget of about $17.1 million. Knowing what all the towns are going through this year, we, I knew that wouldn't fly. So we, and that represented about a 5% increase in our budget. We looked at other reductions. I'm reducing another administrator. My assistant superintendent principal position has been eliminated. It'll be replaced with an interim principal for next year, but the assistant superintendent position is gone. So I have no more assistant superintendents after July 1. We looked at teacher reductions, support staff reductions, and we're looking at one or two program reductions in terms of what we offer. So our budget overall is up about 1.1% from this year. Next. This is the revenue plan. You can see assessments, the top line are assessments to our member communities. We're anticipating a slight reduction in chapter 70 aid. This is not as low as it could be because we have more students. Regional transportation aid, we're assuming is level funded. And that line item over the last four years has gone from about $900,000 to $495,000. The state's only reimbursing us about 53% of our actual costs to transport students from the 16-member towns. Prior year and current year tuition. You can see we're trending to rely less on current year tuition. This is what we collect from non-member communities. We use it in the revenue plan to offset the assessments from the, our member towns. Member postgraduate tuition, $75,000. Prior to this year FY12, the member towns have picked up the cost of an adult coming back to school. There was a strong argument made, and I agreed with it, that all postgraduate students should be paying their tuition. So over the next four years, we will be increasing the amount of tuition charged to adults, beginning with FY12, and that represents about 25% of the average postgraduate tuition, which is only $5,000. So next year, we'll charge 50%. We'll reevaluate its impact on applications, which it doesn't seem to have any impact. And over by FY16, we'll be up to 100%. And so no member town will be paying twice to educate a person in their school. There was a great argument made that they've gone through the Arlington Public Schools. Why are we paying for them again to go into Minuteman? So we're changing that. While we did that, we also did three steps to help people pay for their tuition. One is all our programs now are approved by the VA. So returning veterans and veterans can use their GI benefit to pay the tuition at Minuteman. It was a long, arduous task, but we got it done. We also have set up a prepayment plan like folks do with college tuition. And we're also now eligible under Title IV for Pell Grants and student loans to be used to pay that tuition. Next slide. This is the last slide, I believe, and it's reflective of the assessment that we're asking for this year. And you can see there's been a decline over the last few years, and the per pupil decline is what we're really looking at because that, I think, is telling the tale best of all. Next slide. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Doctor?
No. I'll answer any questions, though, Mr. Moderator.
Sure. Mr. Carmen?
Dean Carmen, precinct 20, and a member of the Finance Committee. I, I stand tonight in very strong support for this budget, and, you know, normally I wouldn't get up for that, but equally importantly, I stand in very strong support and respect and admiration for this Superintendent. When you, when I look at this budget historically, when I first joined the Finance Committee, this was the budget I dreaded the most. And why? If you look at, if you take out your Minuteman handout that we got a few, a few nights back, and you go to page nine, what you notice is over a 15-year history, steadily declining enrollment. So enrollment on the 15-year chart peaks at 933 students and is in steady decline. So your mind would say to you, okay, well, if it's in steady decline, then the costs have to be somewhat steady because if student enrollment's going down even with inflation, things can't be going up that quickly. If you flip the next page to page 11, you see that's not true. What you see is that costs continue to rise. And what really impacted Arlington in a, in a truly negative way was even though the overall enrollment at Minuteman was going down, our Arlington enrollment, if you went back to page nine, wasn't going down. So we were getting a larger and larger share of an increase in cost. The school got to a point, five years ago, where it was the most expensive school in the state, the costs were out of control. And as a Finance Committee member, we used to have, have the Superintendent of Minuteman every year and beg him, plead with him, ask him to right-size the school. And he would basically tell us to go pound sand and walk out and, you know, essentially say, well, I can get the other 12 member communities. All I need is 12, I don't need you, good luck. And so it was a very frustrating time for me, and I'm, you know, I'm sure for many people in town meeting, it was a very frustrating time for you. So, Bolt, and I can't believe it's four years now, you know, Dr. Boquillen showed up, we have our Finance Committee reorganization meeting in the fall. First meeting, he asked if he could come, come to it and talk to us. So comes to our meeting, he asks us one question. What do you want? What can I do? And, you know, unfortunately for him, years and years of frustration, we unloaded on him. And we said, your school enrollment is going down, your costs are going up, you have programs that have very small numbers of students in them, and you're doing nothing about, your predecessor did nothing about it. And so if you look at the data that he presented, what, what the Superintendent of Minuteman has done is steadily over years, bend the cost curve, increase enrollment, and it has had a very positive result. We have not seen significant increases in the Arlington appropriation, we have not seen significant increases in the school. Clearly, as we all know, when you have tight fiscal resources, especially in the environment he's been doing it in with the general economy down, this is a very big achievement, and it's a very important achievement. Because if we were standing here, not with a, let's say, 14% decrease in our Minuteman assessment, but we were sitting here with a 14% increase in our Minuteman assessment, we would also be seeing other areas of our general fund where we would have to cut, and we would have to lose more services. And so with that as the backdrop, I would ask everybody to support this budget. I would ask everybody to support this Superintendent. I am sure when you go through a process of right-sizing a school, you don't make a lot of friends, you don't become the most popular person in the school. So, you know, like I said, I'd ask you to support the budget and support the Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, precinct nine, member of the Minuteman School Committee from 1997 through 2001. And those were the years sort of the left where things were totally out of control. Those were the years when 47% of the students were non, were member town students, and a third of them were enrolling under school choice at $5,000 apiece. That's no longer happening. The economics have reversed. Non-member towns are paying more than we're paying. The ship has been righted. We've looked, they've looked at the programs there and determined what programs are viable and stopped running expensive programs that were not fiscally viable. The ship has been righted. The management is truly become responsive to the member towns, where the previous administration was very introspective in, in looking at the school and could count on the support of 11 very small member towns to create the two-thirds majority they needed to get things done. The ship has been righted. We have something to be very proud of. Not only do we have the best vocational school in the state, but is now being run efficiently in a fair manner, where the leadership of this district cares about its large member towns and its small member towns, and is making sure that they are responsive to both the students who are coming from our communities and to the voters and taxpayers who have to support them. It is very, very worthwhile to vote for this budget. It is a dream from my first 10 years as a town meeting member, the years before I became a member of that school committee, where this would be an utter nightmare, where we would spend over a night just debating a budget that we couldn't disapprove because we already had 11 member towns that had approved it, and we were just frustrated. Now we are proud. Now we are being listened to. This budget deserves our support. I only caution you on one thing. As those numbers have changed, as it's become more expensive for the non-member towns to go and send kids, it will become a better deal for these non-member towns to come and join the district, which will require unanimous consent to amend the regional agreement. Some of the communities there are cities, they don't have moderators to appoint. We're gonna need to change the governance structure in some manner. And I want you to take a look at, on page nine. Look at Dover. When I was there, we had a child at Minuteman who had his own personal school committee member. The ratio between Arlington and Dover's representation on the Minuteman School Committee and thus the vote in governance, one town, one vote, Dover has one vote, we have one vote. We range anywheres from 150 to, no, actually, it's error to one because in 2008, they had zero students. No kids, but still a vote. That's, that's kinda interesting. We, I, I hope that the message that comes back from, from this meeting, that while we're pleased about this, while we have an exceptional Superintendent and great management, this righted the ship, these things can go astray. And that as we're looking to attract new member districts, who may very well be cities, that we're looking at some of the governance structures to make sure that a town like Arlington, which is a major contributor, or maybe some of the surrounding communities that might want to join this wonderful school because it's cheaper to join, will have a reason to do so or not fear being outvoted by the Dovers of the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chapit?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roland Chapit, precinct 12. I, I stand to support this budget, and I commend Dr. Boquillen for the, the effort that he has put into Minuteman School. You may recall last year, I told you that I visited up there a few weeks before our town meeting. What impressed me the most was the attitude, not only of the kids, but the teachers. It was a very positive message that was coming back. And so I didn't go this year, but I'm sure it's the same or even better than it was 12 months ago. One of the issues that we talked about briefly last year, and I was gonna ask Dr. Boquillen to respond to this if I may, Mr. Moderator, if you look on page three, mission and district goals, go down to G, complete phase one of MSBA feasibility study and deliver enrollment study, et cetera, et cetera. Could you give us a couple of positive remarks of just how that's going on?
Doctor?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In page three, I don't have it in front of me, but in regards to the, the regional agreement task force, which was looking at our budget, our regional agreement, I'm sorry, I'm just so overwhelmed. so overwhelmed by all this wonderful talk here. I'd like, I'd really like a copy of this. The Regional Agreement Task Force, which was Arlington, was well represented by Mr. Tosti, has met for over the last 14 months and came up with some final recommendations that my school committee is now considering. In regards to the enrollment study, NESDEC completed the New England School Development Council, completed a very in-depth analysis of our enrollment study, and are projecting that by the year 2015, the school will have met its planned effective operating capacity, which they have set at 950. So we're well on the track to moving forward with the next phase of a feasibility study, which is to hire an owner's project manager and a design firm to understand what the scope of a renovation would be. We're not going to build a new school, that's not necessary. Also, in regards to our strategic plan and educational plan, we've identified three new program areas to replace the four or five that we will have closed by the end of this fiscal year. And those new program areas are exciting, and so I'm going to mention them tonight. One of them is animal science, believe it or not. The second one is biosecurity and criminal justice. And the third program area is the technical theater arts. And we're very thrilled about those, and looking forward to working with the designers around what a new Minuteman might look like. I don't expect to come back to any town meeting until 2014, perhaps even 2015, with a real approved scope of work. And I'm going to be working very closely with the town managers, and the FinComs, and the capital planning committees of all our 16 towns, to make sure that we build it right, and that we build it to serve our children going forward for the next 50 years, because we need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor?
Jim O'Connor, Precinct 19. Sometimes you hear other members say exactly what you want to say, and Rowley and I were at that meeting, and I can't say more about Mr. Bukowian and his willingness to show us around, work on the physical plant, and he's a star example of things we could do in Arlington to improve our own physical plight.
Thank you. Madam? Pass. Ms. Weber? And Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. I had a couple of quick questions. I, too, am in awe of the superintendent's hard work, and how this, both, he's progressed the school financially, as well as with the students. So, I had a question. On his slide, where he discussed the current year tuition, so if I understood correctly, we're paying about $20,000, and the out-of-districts were in the 23 to 26 range, but I have a hard time understanding that when I see the current year tuition at $1.3 million. So, where does the $20,000 or $24,000 that all those out-of-district people, is that uniform, or is that just proposed?
There are two communities that are under a long-term agreement, where they get a slight discount on tuition.
Yeah.
Because they send us a minimum of 50 students, they get $1,500 off the base tuition. The other place that may be a little confusing is that the number of students who are on IEPs, their assessment of $5,000 per pupil goes into another area that's not clearly identified in the current year tuition. But in general, the Minuteman has relied more on prior year tuition. So, in other words, the money we collect this year, we would use in FY13's budget. We have chosen to use more current year tuition the previous two fiscal years, really to keep assessments down to the member towns. It's not a sustainable accounting practice that we want to do, it's like continuing to draw down your reserve accounts, or your free cash accounts, you just can't do that, but you have them there, so let's use them, and that was our approach.
Okay, even with that, even with that explanation, I see the prior year tuition was $3 million, and the assessments is $9 million, yet I got the impression that the out-of-districts are paying $23,000 to $26,000 per student, while we're only paying 20. So I'm confused by that.
I guess I'm having trouble understanding the question. Is it, it's a math question?
Well, so, because there's 445 students in-
From member towns.
From member towns, and that's the 9 million plus.
Yes.
And then there's 309, and my rough estimate is that's about three-quarters the number, and so I'm questioning why the other towns are not paying 6. Like, two-thirds or three-quarters of 9 would be a prorated amount for the other towns. So somebody's getting a discount, is what, I'm confused by that. We can talk about this offline.
Yeah, I'm not-
Because I don't think this is going anywhere. Okay.
My business manager isn't here with me tonight.
No, that's not a problem. And then, the next thing is, is this wonderful map that you provided us with this year, which is, I found to be quite instructive. We've heard all these comments about, other people should join, and further to Mr. Schlickman's comment, the real reason I wanted to get up here, other than try to figure out that thing, which obviously we're not going to figure out tonight, is, is what can we do to help you, since, you know, you've asked the Finance Committee, you know, how can you help us? My question is, what can we do to help you? Is there some type of home rule petition that all these communities could file, that would, that would allow us to enlarge the district? How can we help you? Maybe that's something you have to go back and think about, but if there's some article or warrant articles that we need to pass that would help you, I personally would be very receptive to that.
Well, I appreciate the question, and I think, I'll give you, there's two dimensions, what you could do now. There are a number of meetings being held around the state, around, under the umbrella of regionalization, and I think some of the talk around regionalization needs to be informed by members of regional vocational technical school districts, because there's not a lot of strong voices talking about regionalization within those discussions, because there are obviously people, towns near us, that would benefit from being a part of our district, but there's no incentive for them to do that, other than the incentive we're trying to create. So there may be some opportunities there to talk about that. I think in the long term, in the fall or in the spring, when we come with a change in our district agreement, we'll have a whole package that we're going to be explaining that will provide some incentives within that package. So passing that district agreement change would probably be the most helpful thing we could be doing, to expand the region in a sensible way.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, Precinct 11. I move the question.
Motion, second? Motion to terminate debate. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. Debate is terminated. We have forced the recommended vote of the Finance Committee to fund $2,352,988 to Minuteman Vocational Tech. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. Unanimous vote, and I so declare. Doctor, you have your money. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sir, purpose to your rights.
Mr. Moderator, Mike Healy, Precinct 13. I'd like to take Article 17 off the table.
I think you beat Mr. Tosti by three seconds. All in favor of taking 17 off the table?
Can we do the whole thing?
Huh?
Can we do the whole thing?
Yeah, let's take all of them off the table.
Yeah, I move that Articles 17 and 22 through 60, except for Articles 31, 34, and 35, which were already on the table before, be taken from the table.
Second. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? That brings us back to 17. Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Leonard, Precinct 17. Earlier this evening, a gentleman asked a question about tagging, and I had raised the same question on a previous evening, and town manager was kind enough to clear up the subject, that in the event of a sign at Pierce Field being tagged, it would be the town's responsibility to repair such sign. Now, granted, that could be later changed, if the school committee does some procedures, but I'm happy with his answer, as of right now, that the town would be responsible. Second question, I've noticed on some of the slides up here, that they've shown of the signs that are going to be put up, are supposedly going to be put up, that the signs are basically stating, like, Big A in red and white for Arlington, and I'm wondering if there's a misconception in town meeting, that these signs are going to be supporting Arlington functions, places, clubs, and then in small lettering, the sponsor will be labeled in small lettering, or as some people might be thinking, is the person sponsoring going to have the sole possession of the sign?
We are not debating what the signs look like this evening, we're strictly allowing the signs to go up.
But what-
What the signs will look like is going to be up to the special permit seekers, and the ARB, if that's who's going to grant these things, and the school committee and their regulations for the signs.
I'm just wondering if that point could be cleared up, that is the-
Yeah, we're not voting on anything you've seen here, except for those words.
But yet-
They showed you pretty pictures, they're not what we're voting on.
All right, but I mean, you could be led to believe that the pretty pictures was what the signs would be looking like, is what I'm getting at.
I would take those strictly as theoretical examples, not what they're guaranteeing they're going to look like.
Because again, like I'm saying, the content of the sign, is it for the benefit of Arlington, or for the benefit of the sponsor? Is where I'm confused.
I would say the benefit of the sponsors. Why the hell's would you put money on there?
Because, as I said, the sign was a little bit deceiving. The last question is, where these signs are going to be, okay? Where I'm a little bit confused, would the signs be placed on individual, would they be placed on the existing fencing around the Pierce Field, in full view of, let's say, people in the stands, or would they be on both sides of existing fencing? Which would, to me, would be like an eyesore.
Mr. Kair, what do you envision the placement of these signs to look like?
It would all be subject to the special permit and the hearings and everything else. Plans that we've seen are more centered on the field themselves, but those are preliminary of everything else, and nothing's come before us. So, you know, it's all subject to that special permit process.
So you're not saying whether you're actually going to erect structures that are going to carry the signs, or you're going to have the signs hanging off the existing fencing?
I think the expectation is the latter, but nothing's come before us yet, so, I mean, we need this in order to have that conversation.
Okay, then I would be, I would be curious, I mean, I know more discussion is necessary on this, but I would be curious that if they did go on the existing fencing, if it would be overkill on both sides of the fence, all the way around the field. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, Precinct 11. I move to terminate debate on the question.
And all articles, all issues before us? Okay. Motion to terminate debate on the article and all issues before it. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Okay, we have two votes. Oh, that was loud. Everybody who doesn't want to terminate debate, please say no.
No.
Okay. Sorry about that. Debate is terminated. We have before us two votes, a substitute by the Arlington Redevelopment Board, which is dated May 4th, and then there was their original vote. First, we're going to vote on their substitute vote. That's what I mean, the substitute motion is the amendment. What amendment? Oh, the red?
That's administrative.
Yeah. I was going to allow that administratively. The, the, one or more permanent, because that's, I'll take a vote on that if you want. I thought it was administrative. All in favor of the substitute motion, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. My opinion, it is substituted. We now have the main vote as substituted. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. Okay, this is zoning, so it's a two-thirds, so all in favor, please rise. Sam Tellers, please. Up front, yeah, hold a fucking yes, no? We have nine up front. Mr. Schlickman?
26.
26. Mr. O'Connor?
29.
29. Mr. Trembley?
31.
31. And Mr. McCabe?
38.
38. All opposed, please rise. Up front?
Zero.
Zero. Mr. Schlickman?
Zero.
Zero. Mr. O'Connor?
Zero.
Zero. Mr. Trembley?
Two.
Two. Mr. McCabe?
One.
One. It is a positive vote, 133 to 3. It passes. That brings us to Article 22. Bylaw amendment, town meeting, standing vote. Recommended vote, this was originally brought by the Town Meeting Procedure Committee, the selectmen have a recommended vote as printed in their report. Mr. O'Connor, would you like to address it?
James O'Connor, Precinct 19, Town Meeting Procedures Committee. I find myself in agreement with the Board of Selectmen, and probably 99.9% of this body here, that we would like to propose this warrant article be passed, for the reasons that it would expedite voting counts, so that in instances just like the one we just had, if there is a supermajority required of the body, that we don't have to count every vote if we have more than the required amount. So I would ask you to consider this. I know that at a prior meeting, we were asked to move this matter forward, but it wasn't timely at that moment, per the moderator's decision. So please vote in favor of this, along with the Board of Selectmen and the Town Meeting Procedures Committee. Thank you.
In this matter of information to the meeting, we've had 11 such lopsided votes so far this meeting. Anyone else wish to address the issue? Mr. Berkowitz?
Precinct 8, I would just like to clarify that under this proposal, we would still be permitted to doubt the vote by five people standing, is that correct?
Correct. And you could even still have a roll call with 30. Mr. McCrory?
Hugh McCrory, Precinct 20. And also a member of the Town Procedures Committee. Actually, when we, the committee took the vote, I believe I was the only dissenting voice on this, when we took the vote. I guess I have since changed my mind, based on my experience at town meeting. Yeah, I guess the reason why I voted against it wasn't because of the moderator, but it's just in the future, but I guess I have faith in our excellent moderator and the town in general, so I actually urge you to support the, this article, as I will be doing. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCrory. Mr. Fiore?
Peter Fiore, Precinct 2. It's late, and I can't think straight. Can you just explain to me how this changes what we do now? do now? I just wanna understand, I'm not really clear that it, how it changes business the way we do now.
Right now, the moderator can declare a majority vote and a unanimous vote. So if we're doing zoning bylaws that require a two-third vote, say, if it's anything less than unanimous, I can't, or any moderator cannot declare it, we have to have a two-third vote, so that's why we have to keep doing standing votes for those folks who decide they want to vote, no. The moderator would be able to declare a two-third vote by the voice vote, if in his opinion, it is two-thirds vote, and we'll have to go through the same colloquy with the clerk as we do now for unanimous, that there are eighty-five members present and voting, and that, in my opinion, it is a two-third vote. It can be challenged by the five voters who would, five members who would stand and challenge the vote, we don't lose that right at all. Otherwise, our voting procedures would remain the same, it would just give that little bit of extra, and this is provided by state law, and I did a survey through the moderator gavel line, almost every other representative town meeting around us, actually all of them, have this article and they use it. It's, they find it very effective, they can't believe we didn't have it. So it's, all that would change is give me, and future moderators, the right to declare a two-third vote. Just on the vote we just had, one hundred and thirty-three to-
Three.
Three. I could declare that a two-third vote, we could move on. Every time, in my opinion, we do a standing vote, between the initial vote, the standing, the counting, the standing, the counting, it takes anywhere up to five minutes. So that's over an hour of time that we've spent doing that exercise.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else wish to discuss the article? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
In my opinion, that is a positive vote. That brings us to Article 24. Bylaw amendment, public records. Recommended vote of, Mr. Loretty? Recommended vote of the selectmen, there's no action. Mr. Loretty?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Loretty, Precinct 7, I have a substitute motion I'd like to introduce for this article I distributed on Monday. So I'd like to move that substitute motion.
Yes, sir. Could we have a second?
Thank you, I submitted this article because I believe there needs to be a better understanding of the public record flow within the town, and amongst sub-public officials, there needs to be a change in attitude about providing public records. At a recent town meeting, someone spoke of the us versus them dynamic that was taking place in town meeting. Unfortunately, I think that sometimes occurs with public records as well. Public records are not their records, they're our records, but if you read the selectmen's report on this article, they talk about keeping the fees for public records high enough to serve as a natural gatekeeper, to prevent too much access. So the thought is, unless you really want them and are willing to pay our price, you can't have them. I reject that attitude. I think a more appropriate way to think of public records is the way we think of materials in the library. Accesses, to, access to them is provided without regard to who is asking, or what is being asked for, it's done at the lowest possible cost and as quickly as possible. Unfortunately, responses to public records requests in Arlington are too often handled not as routine administrative matters, but rather as political matters. I have more to say about that, but first I want to talk about the resolution itself. It begins with a series of whereas's, which for the most part are taken or borrowed from Secretary of the Commonwealth's Guide to the Public Records Law.
Crap.
And there are a couple others that are simply things that I would regard as good customer service and good management. I hope they're not controversial, but I'd like to turn to the resolves in the substitute motion and the resolution, and why I think they're necessary. And these resolves are informed by my own experience in making a public records request for emails from last October, and the subsequent need to appeal the response to that request to the secretary, I'm sorry, to the supervisor of records and the secretary of the Commonwealth's office, as well as to the, and it's also informed by the experience of others who have made requests, both on the town side and on the school side, and in particular for email requests. And I mention both sides because we actually have two different email systems in town that are not compatible, they're not the same. So the first resolve talks about the town accepting the offer of free training on the public records law from the state, and I think that's, it's important to do that, I think it's a good idea to request that town officials make use of that training, because in my experience, the public records law really isn't fully understood in this town. And I want to give you a few examples of that. I spoke to one individual who worked in the IT department a decade ago, and he said as early as 2002, it was understood that in order to be compliant with state law, archives of emails had to be searchable. When I made my request back in October, on the town side, the town did not yet have a searchable archiving system in for its emails. When I presented on this article at town meeting, I'm sorry, before the selectmen, one of the selectmen asked town council if records that, or emails that happened to be embarrassing couldn't be withheld. Fortunately, town council corrected her, and I think, you know, one of the reasons people make public records requests is they want to get to the truth of the way the town government operates, and they don't want to listen or simply accept kind of the public relations presentation we too often get. I think there's also a misunderstanding of when you can use attorney-client privilege to restrict access to emails. When I questioned town council earlier this evening about the zoning board of appeals decision, I had asked her for her memorandum to that board, and she denied it on the basis of attorney-client privilege. That memorandum was made part of the public record for that, for that decision by the zoning board of appeals, it was distributed to all of the zoning board of appeals members. It was, in every respect, a public record and not covered by attorney-client privilege. There's also a misunderstanding in town that when you file a public records request, if the person you file it with doesn't have that record, they have an obligation to forward it to the person who does. I've also seen inappropriate charges, when some of the Mass Ave opponents were making requests for written or paper records to the town, the charges for photocopying were not consistent with the, with the state public records law. The other thing that happens in the town is that the lowest-priced employees capable of fulfilling the quest, requests are not always being used. In the case of emails, what has happened in the past is, instead of even using town employees at all, the town is hiring outside consultants at a hundred dollars an hour, even when there are lower-cost employees in the town who can, who can obtain those records. That's not consistent with the law. Now I think at this point, that's understood, however, while the law, the expectation of the law, indeed the regulations of the Secretary of the Commonwealth require that the lowest-paid employees be used to obtain the records, what the town is now doing is using the highest-paid employees in the IT department to provide and respond to requests for emails. And that brings me to the next, the next resolve, which is that the town really ought to be using lower-cost employees for doing anything, and not simply relying on the fact that they're gonna be charging back the cost of records to the person making the request. Certainly, you don't expect the head of the library to be helping you find a book, you expect a page or a low-priced, a low-cost employee to do that. Question really is, are we going to take a gatekeeper approach to public records, or are we going to take a customer service approach? Now, the next resolve is that the town publish its schedule of fees, and this is a direct result of my experience last October. Originally, in the warrant article, I talked about actually establishing a, a set fee for emails that were furnished in response to public records requests. The original cost estimate I received was a cost of between a thousand and fifteen-hundred dollars to fulfill this request, and that was the reason I appealed it. Now, I still have not yet received that request, but I have heard about the number of records that were, that came out of it. And I should tell you, the reason I made this request, it had to do with a property on Dudley Street, that in 2009 was scheduled to come before the redevelopment board for an environmental design review special permit. Well, 2010 comes around, and now that very same development is scheduled to go before the zoning board of appeals, and I wanted to find out what happened and why the people behind me decided that they didn't have to comply with your zoning bylaw. So I filed the, I filed this public records request for all the emails that, one, related to 39 Dudley Street, and two, contained four names, and two of those names were the past and present owner of that property, and two of those names were for local attorneys who commonly have business before the ZBA and before the zoning enforcement officer. And one of those people I believed, or had come to understand, had actually helped the zoning enforcement officer write a letter to the redevelopment board explaining why this project now was not, didn't have to go before the redevelopment board. Well, anyway, the upshot of all of this is that there were approximately 200 hits for emails that were relevant to the property address, but there were 4,000 emails related to the names of these people. And, and my immediate reaction is, you know, first, my God, what have I done? How did I come up with that many emails? But also, if you looked at the formula that I, that is in the warrant article, the, the total cost that could be charged back to me for that, for those emails was over eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars, when in fact, the revised price that came back after I appealed the, the amount was 200 dollars. So in fact, the amount of, the formula was really too high. So I think it's important instead, just to have that information published, so people know what the schedule of fees is. We publish fees for everything else in town, I don't see a reason why we can't publish them for the amount that the town is charging to respond to public record requests. And finally, the last resolve is to actually keep records on what the requests are and what the amount is that the town is charging for them. And in fact, this is something that's already required into state law, the requests themselves are public records, and so are the cost estimates, and the state has a whole bunch of regulations about record retention policies. But this will, I think, eliminate the problem that I see of some people not being charged anything for public records. And one individual, Mr. Sprague cited the example, that when he requested a bunch of emails for the Boris Kofflin affair, he was charged nothing, they were given to him promptly at no charge, nothing like the thousand, fifteen-hundred dollars that I was charged. And I think if everyone knows exactly how much people are being charged for their particular requests, it really indicates whether the town is making those charges appropriately. So I'd like to come back to where I started, and that is, I believe the town needs a better understanding of the public records law and how to, how to respond to it, and that record, the record custodians, those are the peoples to whom, people to whom the requests are made, should not be thought of as gatekeepers, and they should, they should be people who respond to the request as quickly and economically as possible. And the town really needs to comply with not only the letter of the law, but also the spirit of the law, not waiting to the 10th day, the maximum amount of time allowed before they respond, not using the most expensive people they can to respond to requests. So for all of these reasons, I ask you to support this substitute motion for this resolution, to send this message to town officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loretty. Mr. Tully?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Joe Tully, Precinct 14. When I was a kid, I used to like watching the Olympics, and I always thought it was really neat to watch everybody set records left and right, and I said, wouldn't it be great if someday you could hold a world record? I thought that was just about the best thing ever. And I was fortunate to, I think, be a fair enough athlete, that I had a chance to play a little bit of college athletics, but I never really certainly excelled to the point where I was gonna be a world record holder in anything. But a couple of years back, I actually was presented with the opportunity to submit a public records request to the town of Arlington, to the, the school committee and the superintendent, and I like to think that I'm sort of a record holder of sorts. Mr. Loretty, I don't know where he is in the hall, I would have enjoyed getting a bill for 850 dollars. I was asked to pay 194,000 dollars for records, and the only reason I don't have the, the letter with me is that we're having some renovations done on the house and I can't get at the file cabinet right now. So in lieu of having to take out a second mortgage on my house, I had to settle for much less than I originally sought. There's no doubt in my mind that public records requests are being treated in a political manner, rather than in the forthright manner that I think the Secretary of State's office would like them to be treated. I would submit that my experience, in addition to Mr. Loretty's, probably speaks to that. Also, a bit of a lesser matter, but I've never really tended to get the records within the 10-day period that I've requested them. I did make a records request recently, and, and Mr. Good, in fact, was, was nice enough to get them to me in a timely manner, but some of the other requests I've made have, the town's been rather dilatory in relaying those to me. I also tend to get replies from the attorneys representing the, the school committee in the school district, which is odd to me because, you know, frankly, whether somebody wants their attorneys to review something or not review it, it doesn't make the record any less of a public record, and I think Mr. Loretty spoke to that, so I would, I'm not gonna belabor that point. And one final point, I didn't want to really reference the ongoing litigation with the Odison people, because I think a lot of us are really frankly tired of it, but not only do I understand that, you know, some of the individuals that prominently splayed emails across, you know, various media, were not charged for the records, I understand that our former superintendent, in fact, testified that I was the only person that was charged for asking for public records related to that matter. So, you know, it is what it is, I'm a big boy, I've staked out some positions on this matter, I'm certainly willing to, to take my, my beating if people want to, you know, try to take their opportunity to stick it to me when I request public records, but I think we ought to at least, as a town, understand that this is what's going on. It seems like it's a little dirty secret, and it would be nice if we at least got it out in the open and had an open debate about how these record requests are being treated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tully. Mr. Fisher?
Andrew Fisher, Precinct 6. I support the resolution. In my case, I wrote to the town manager's office and asked for information about, of all things, the town's liability and property insurance, which is through the Mass Municipal Association. And I explained, I, part of what was on my mind is that I wanted to know if we get a price break for having an animal control officer, since in normal homeowner insurance, believe it or not, dog bites is about 20% of your cost, it used to be 33%. And I explained that I wondered what prevention, so, for programs they had. And some of you know I'm interested in insurance, and the response back was it would cost me 32 dollars an hour to get this information. And if I'd known the language better, I probably could have just asked for, I forget what the, there's a term for the contract, but I believe that they, the office could have answered my request by just handing me whatever the insurance program is. So I wrote back and I explained more, that this was just an ongoing interest of mine, and it probably could be taken care of by a conversation. And indeed, two or three weeks later, I got a phone call from a woman at, at the insurance operation from Mass Municipal Association. So in the end, I had about a 20-minute conversation with her, and I think I found out what I wanted to know. But my concern is that people be treated equally around these things, maybe I'm a naughty boy, I don't know. On another occasion, I wrote to the CFO of the schools, because I wanted information about special ed, and here again, I was told this couldn't violate privacy, and it would cost 32 dollars an hour, I don't know where the 32 dollars came from, but it was the same number. In this case, I said, what should I do? I said to my wife, and she said, well, talk to the superintendent. So I did, and this whole, and in the meantime, I had found there was already an- this whole, and in the meantime, I had found there was already an incredible report compiled on all those costs. So anyway, I think this is a real issue, and I, I think it ought to be dealt with more forthrightly and openly, because I don't know why one person gets the $32 an hour charge and another person does not. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marr?
I'm just curious if the selectmen have a position on the resolution?
We'll find out in about one or two people. Mr. Sullivan, you're next.
Yes, I just want to assure the town meeting members that we do take the public records law very seriously. And I've been at town meeting now for some eight years, and I must say that I've never seen such mischaracterization of what's going on in these public information requests, as I've heard tonight. Total falsehoods that I put out here. In terms of Mr. Loretty, he's made a number of requests for information put to us. We've complied with all those requests. He's filed a number of appeals with the state. If anyone knows how the state secretary's office works on this, they take those requests very seriously. They review those appeals, and they've denied all those appeals. They found that the town has complied with all the requests appropriately. And again, we do take them seriously. In terms of some of the requests that may have appeared out of line, in terms of the cost of it, it may have been a case where they've asked for a substantial number of emails from a database that we really can't search, or old database records that were put away. And it would be very expensive now to go through that on a manual basis. But in terms of more recent records that are updated and are searchable, those are much more readily available, and they cost less, as Mr. Fisher just mentioned. That was not a public records request. He was looking for information and an analysis of what would happen, to the impacts and so forth. He wasn't asking for a document. So that's not a public records request that we denied him or we're going to charge him $36 for. And that's why we referred him to the insurance company, to look for the answers that he was looking for. Not the document, but to speak to someone. So, you know, from our perspective here, I think this is really just getting to a point, trying to insult town officials here. And I can assure you again, that we've taken all these requests seriously and always will.
Ms. LeCort?
Annie LeCort, Precinct 15. The Board of Selectmen has not voted on the resolution, so there is no statement from the Board of Selectmen on supporting or denying this resolution. We did vote on the original request. I think our biggest concern on the original request was that the proposed fee schedule was very restrictive. The, the persons who were needed to do the search for the particular request that Mr. Loretty made that, that made him very frustrated about the cost, we did need an IT professional to do those searches. And that's not, you know, an intern in an office who has that technical capability and training and cross-training people to do these kinds of searches is not necessarily something you can do for the lowest-paid employee. It depends on the nature of the records that you're looking for, and the search terms, and so on and so forth. Obviously, this is all getting easier every day technologically. And I do believe we solved the problem technologically eventually, and were able to give Mr. Loretty what he was looking for. I do have a personal opinion about this particular resolution. I think that one of the things that this whole discussion has brought to my attention as a selectman that I've raised with the town manager, is that we do need to have consistent policies and procedures about how we handle records requests, and that that information needs to be disseminated to all of our town employees. Okay? But I don't think that there's any evil intent here to obfuscate when these kind of requests come to busy town employees who have to take time away from the job that they're already hired to do, that they're already under-resourced to do, in order to attempt to comply with the request, some of which can be very broad and some of which can be very unclear. So personally, I, you should do whatever you feel is correct about this resolution. Okay? But I hope that you will not do this in the spirit of feeling like somehow you need to do this to punish town employees who are being recalcitrant, because believe me, at least on the town side, that isn't what's happening. Okay? I have every confidence that our employees are doing the best that they can to both comply with the law and also to provide good customer service. Personally, I don't know when these kind of requests come in. So I don't have the ability to do anything political to prevent response from happening because they go to the department heads or to the person who is concerned to fulfill the request, and they don't come to the Board of Selectmen for consideration. We don't get asked by our staff whether or not it's okay to release the records or whatever. Our expectation is that staff will always comply with public records law and will always communicate with the citizens in the most forthright and customer service-friendly way possible and with the greatest alacrity. That's our job as selectmen, to make sure that that's happening from the head on down. So that's where I'm standing.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn. Before I take the motion, any notices of reconsideration on the articles that were voted this evening? Mr. Toasty served notice on Articles 51, 61. Any others? Seeing none, Mr. Toasty has one quick announcement before we vote to adjourn.
Yes, I just wanted to remind everybody that on Monday, we'll be bringing up the capital budget, and then the two schools, the Stratton and especially the Thompson School on Monday. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that those issues would be coming up on Monday. Thank you.
All in favor of German, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? So adjourned.